Chairman, Tony gave thumbs up, so whenever you're ready.
Turn me on.
I think he's ready.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to day two of our budget meetings and budget review. So, Tom, I know you-
Thanks, just real quick, Commissioners, this morning is public safety. And I'll turn it over to Lori in here in just a bit. But there's seven departments and we have two hours and 15 minutes. So that's 19 minutes per department. So somewhere around 15 to 20 minutes, we'll begin to give you a high sign. It's really important that we keep this moving so everybody gets a chance to be heard. And if something has to be sidebared, we could set up a staff meeting or something like that. So just to try to stay within time this morning is going to be very important so we can get all through we have to do today. Lori, kick us off.
And I would agree. I just think that for commission, I think we need to focus our minds and our questions related to the budget item that we will be hearing on all the, out of respect to the staff and the work. So if there's a policy or something issue, as Tom said, if there's something about that, that'll be, that can be done at a different time or one-on-one or whatever. So let's keep this focused on the mission of what this meeting's about, which is the budget item itself, okay? Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, we'll be on page 311 of your binders. I'll hand it over to Rusty.
Thank you, Lori. Good morning, Commissioners. Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. I manage public safety. So today is Public Safety Day. As Lori said, you'll start on page 311. The chairman has a separate sheet that I laid there so that he can keep track of the order of the departments. It's also on the second page of your packet that shows the order that they'll be presenting in. And it basically follows the book so that you can follow the pages. With that said, you will hear from seven departments this morning. Emergency Communications, Emergency Management, EMS, the Fire District, the Forensic Science Center Corrections. And Glenda will also talk briefly about the Crime Prevention Fund. And then M A B C D, Mr. Labrum will be here for that. Today, you will hear their budgets will amount to approximately $89,725,624, which represents, in the spirit of flat budget, an approximate 1.69% reduction from the revised 21 budget. You'll hear approximately 10 decision packages across those seven departments, which has a cumulative total of about $863,000. And you'll hear two revenue package, to talk about two revenue packages, which amount to about $894,000. So with that, we will get started so that we can stay on track. And first up will be Elena Moreno, Director of Emergency Communications.
Elena, we see you again.
Again.
Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Elena Moreno, the Deputy Director for Emergency Communications. And so for us, our mission is to provide the critical link to emergency services. And we're committed to serving with integrity and providing efficient and equitable access to emergency services and serving in a professional and courteous manner to promote the safety and protect property and ensure quality of life for our community. So we are a consolidated 911 agency. And so basically, that means that we serve everything in Sedgwick County, including 31 agencies. And our radio shop maintains a 10-site public safety radio system, including servicing and repair to all of those radios and installing equipment in the vehicles, which could include anything from mobile radios, Axon camera systems, and Cradle Point routers. Our personnel budget is 100% funded by general funds. We have our administration, our radio shop employees, our supervisors, our quality improvement team, and dispatchers and call takers are all included in that. We have, this is our total budget. And out of that, we have 32% that comes out of the 911 tax fund. By statutory, we can't pay for any personnel out of that. Those funds are generally going to be used for necessary equipment for processing 911 calls and for different trainings that we can attend. Some of our challenges and opportunities that we have that we'll be working on over the next five years is our call volume management. National standards, we're working towards to answer 90% of our 911 calls within 10 seconds. We're currently still working to provide avenues to help our dispatchers and call takers reach that. One of the biggest pieces of that is just maintaining our staff retention, keeping people up to speed on basically what needs to happen. We'll also have in our decision packages some things that may help us do that a little bit better. Another thing is recruitment and retention. We do have some turnover that we have. Basically, it comes down to pay and our inability to provide flexible schedules. We're a 24/7 agency, so we have to be there all the time. And that means weekends and holidays as well. So sometimes scheduling doesn't work for everyone. And also, we're boosting our mental health support that we have for our team. If you can imagine, everything that we hear on the phone takes its toll on people. And so we are really trying to bolster that. We have a peer support team that we have in-house that helps with that. We have, Sheriff has an app, I think you guys heard about that yesterday, that they've allowed us to be part of and use that. And so we've also put information out to our supervisors to ask what we can do to help their teams in the meantime. We will also be focusing on diversity and recruitment. One of the things that we have done and that we will be providing is some training for diversity and inclusivity. And so with that, we're trying to get more out into the community to reach different races that we can hire. And so what that means is that right now, we are predominantly a white department. And so in that, we want to make sure that we reach out to our communities and see what we can do to build that gap between 911 and those people in our community. And so with that, when we can bridge that gap, we can also use those as recruitment opportunities to have them possibly come and work for us. Another thing is with technology, if you can imagine, it puts a bigger task on us with, if you guys are aware of like the text to 911 stuff, then we have those increased expectations as technology increases. And so what does that mean for us? We want to be as proactive as we can. And so one of the things that we're looking at building into our system is their real crime, or their real-time crime center. And basically, that would allow us to tap into cameras. That would allow us to, maybe that's cameras in the community. Maybe that's cameras that the police officers wear. And then we have some gunshot detection systems. And so really, that allows us to paint a better picture about what's going on in real time, maybe better than we can on somebody calling and giving us information. And then we'd also like to look at what that means for dedicated dispatching, meaning all of the disciplines that we dispatch for. That's a possibility that we have, maybe getting those people just a little bit. If they can focus on one thing, maybe they'll be a little bit better at it. And that would also help with our retention. Our budget, as Rusty stated, is a pretty flat budget. Really, the only increase is due to just personnel. We do have decision package for the abandoned callback feature, which would allow anybody that calls 911 and they hang up before we get to it. It would have an automated message that would call that person back and ask them if they had an emergency. They could press the button to get connected to our system. And if not, then they wouldn't have to, we wouldn't do anything else. And so right now, we do that manually. And so anytime we get a call, they hang up before we get there or before we answer it, then we have to call them back. And so that would save our people time from having to call those different phones back. We average about 26,000 calls a year that we are having to call back. Our request for that is going to be an approximate 80,000. And that would actually come out of our 911 reserve funds. And so we would just ask permission to be able to access those.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I have, do you have a couple of questions? Is that software, is that already developed? Or is that something that's going to have to be created specifically for our 911?
It's already on the phone system as an option. We would just need additional software to help us or to be able to have that.
Is the 80,000 a yearly or is that just a one-time?
It's one-time.
It's a one-time. And who would support that if something were to go wrong with it?
It's on our state-funded 911 system. So the fees that we pay out of our, for the phone system already, it's just everybody in the state uses that.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. So you talked a little bit about some staff challenges. And you mentioned that pay was the problem. Is that an assumption or how do you know that's the answer?
So in, when our staff leaves, we have set up somebody that's just a neutral party that does exit interviews. And so from June of 2016 through now, conducting 54 exit interviews, 22 of those have stated pay was an issue and why they were leaving.
22 out of 54?
Yes.
Okay, and that's since 2016?
Yes.
How many of you lost since 2016?
I'm not sure, but I can get that for you.
Okay, now of these 22 that left, do we know, did they have a better paying job opportunity? Did they just quit and went to something entirely? I mean, do we know what, I mean, do we know where they ended up in terms of their salary improvement by leaving?
I don't know if they would share that with us, but I can ask to look into that.
Yeah, I think in your exit interview, you should ask them, you know, if you're going to another job that you've already have available to you, you know, can you remind sharing what that wage is that drew you away from our organization? It'd be great information to have that. And I'll just say this once again, rather than making these assumptions, I think we need to be more scientific and reach out to these departments that have high attrition rates. I don't want to assume things. I want to find out from them what the reasons are for leaving. And I think we ought to be, you know, scientific and reach out to those folks and invite them to share, if they're willing to share. Where did they end up? How much are they making? You know, what was it, what was it that caused them to leave? And let them, you know, educate us. Because I mean, it could be pay, but it may not be pay. So we need to be very careful to, not to assume that. Thank you.
Okay, and I do notice, back to the request on the decision package, page 319, thank you for providing data that shows that there's a trend of abandoned calls. 39,000 three years ago, then 53,000, now 58,000. So back to the discussion about this decision package. I assume that 80,000, you all believe that this will help drive those numbers stabilize or drive them down.
Absolutely. It just takes time away from dispatchers that could be answering those calls that really need to be answered. And so we wouldn't have to worry about those.
Okay. All right. Any other questions about that decision package? I don't see any, so.
Our other decision package that we're asking for is called ASAP to PSEP. And really what this is, it allows alarm companies to give us a notification of an alarm that's happening through an electronic notification instead of having to call us for that information, tying up a call taker to take those calls. And so about 20, 2,000 calls, 22 and a half thousand calls annually are time spent on alarm companies. And that doesn't include when we have to call those alarm companies back to get additional information. That's just their initial call to us. So we're asking for 10,500. Also, that would be available out of our 911 fees, so not general funds.
Isn't there a fee that these alarm companies have to pay if they have a, I think, I think the city council issued a fee program that they would have to pay if they have abuse or-
I think that's only in the city of Wichita, though. It's not across the county.
Does that fee come to you at all or does that just go to the city?
That just goes to the city, from my understanding. It's what the, the officers charge for going out for those nuisance alarms.
Okay. I recall. Thank you.
For our decision packages, our complete ask is going to be an estimated 90,500.
Okay, and Commissioner Cruz?
Just real quickly, you talked about text to 911. What does that call, or what is that text volume? Do you guys get a lot of those? Are you doing that? Talk to me just real quickly about that real fast.
We do. It's not, it's not high. I don't think there is a lot of people in the community that know that that's an option as much as we've tried to get that out there. Don't remember the exact number, but I can get it for you, the number of calls that we've had in the last few years. It's increased, but only by maybe 2,000, I think.
Are we doing anything to advertise that?
Yes, we do different community relations that we're trying. We've put it out on Facebook as much as we can.
That'd be great in domestic violence situations where you, yeah. So, okay, great. I appreciate that.
Okay. Anything else, Lori?
No.
Okay, and thanks for all the work. Please share your, our appreciation to staff.
Thank you, I will.
Okay, next up, Emergency Management.
Yes, sir. I might point out, there's about three or four typos that we, that were in this printed document. They've been corrected on the slides. So if you see an inconsistency on a number on about three or four places, it's because we missed them before we printed and we fixed them. But next up is Emergency Management Director Julie Stimson will be presenting. And you start on page 364.
Hi, Julie.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
All right, as Rusty said, page 364. This is our organizational chart. We are typically a department of four. You'll see a couple of positions on the right-hand side of the screen that are shaded. Those are our COVID response employees that are currently supporting the COVID response efforts. Our mission is to build, sustain, and improve Sedgwick County's capabilities in disaster preparation, mitigation, response, and recovery through collaboration, innovative planning, training, and exercise activities. We work closely with all community partners and the Kansas Division of Emergency Management to build and sustain capabilities to mitigate against, prepare for, respond to, and recover from all hazard disasters. We have primarily, the budget is funded through the general fund, but we do have two working grants that are primary support funds, if you will. We have the Emergency Management Performance Grant and the Hazard Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant. Again, these are used to serve all county residents, visitors, and businesses. And we work, the work is primarily completed by internal staff with vendor support to maintain our outdoor warning system. We have, three of our four positions are through general fund. And then we have one grant-funded position. Challenges, two major challenges, and as you guys know, I'm fairly new to the department. So coming in, these are my two biggest challenges that I've seen, is the lack of logistic and administrative support that's causing staff to spend more time on administrative tasks instead of being out in the community doing community outreach activities. Limiting also the means to effectively track and maintain disaster preparedness and response equipment inventory. And then we also have an aging outdoor warning system that is resulting in increased cost in reactive maintenance and repair. And we have some projects being implemented this year to try to become more preventive versus reactive in our maintenance with the sirens. Opportunities for new funding and partnering with the community. We, our goal is to redevelop our community volunteer programs, which will expand our community disaster preparedness and response capabilities at the ground level. Also, opportunities to identify available grant funds for mitigation, disaster preparedness, and response-related projects. I mentioned that we have two grants that we are actively engaged in, but we know there may be more out there. But it goes back to needing that logistics and administrative support to be able to manage those grants and the supplies and equipment that those grants would be used for. Again, these fit into the department's strategic plan to collectively support the ability to expand community disaster preparedness. And again, through innovative planning, training, and exercise activities. You see the 2021 revised budget totals 932,988. 2022 looks amazing. It's reduced by 37.4%, but I do want to make a note, that is because we have realigned the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program to the Health Department. And that's the reason for such a large decrease, if you will. There was a couple, there was a grant associated with that and then 2.5 positions that were realigned.
Is that just neutral shift of money? Okay.
I have two decision packages to present to you today. The first one is the Logistics Central Supply Manager. This position would align our department with the National Incident Management System. It would avail an opportunity for a county-wide central supply system to support multi-agency disaster resource needs. Currently, we have a temporary logistics manager in this position. It's filled to support COVID PPE resource needs. Our concern is discontinuing this position post-pandemic would lead to gaps in preparedness and response for future pandemics and other all hazards. What we've identified through this pandemic was we had years in the making of some sort of disorganization of our inventory within our department as well as outside agencies and what we would need to respond to a pandemic such as COVID. And we've made great strides in the past year to organize, create an inventory system, and have a person overseeing the ins and outs, ins and outs of flows of all the PPE that's coming through. The request is for 65,172 for a one full-time position request. Any questions on that decision package?
No, I don't think so. I don't see any questions.
Okay. Decision package two is a software system that is currently being used to manage our COVID response PPE. And we've identified a use for that beyond COVID that would fix the problem I talked about earlier as far as some of the disorganization of treating, of tracking our inventory and supplies. The request funds to renew the current licensure of Fishbowl software after the contract expires in August of 2022. Currently, this system, like I mentioned, manages the COVID response and post-COVID inventory for emergency management. Current funding was supported through CARES funds. However, a long-term usability was identified during the utilization of this software package. It provides a centralized system to effectively track equipment and supplies that is needed. And again, kind of going back, if we get additional grant equipment and supplies, this system can also help us track those supplies that come in. And the request for that is $2,500. And that is to renew the licensure for five years, five users to be in the system. Any questions?
Same question as Commissioner Lopez, that's one time? Or is that an annual?
That would be an annual, yes. It's $500 per year per license.
Okay. Does a manager have authority to just do this, a $2,500 purchase? Or do they need to have us approve that?
The purchase, yes. But this would add the additional budget authority since they have such a small contractual and commodity budget so that they could have that without sacrificing something else.
You can use your own credit card, Julie, and get that. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. This is not a question about that decision package, but on the contractuals, is this, is this general fund money that comes from property taxes? Or is this, is this grant funds? And what does the contractuals actually include? Do we know?
Contractuals is our routine maintenance, mostly on our outdoor warning system. That's where a lot of the expense goes is from our contractuals, is for the routine maintenance. We do have a capital improvement project on the books for replacement and additional, but the routine maintenance to maintain the system primarily comes out of the contractuals.
Okay.
That by and large is our biggest expense.
All right. I guess with respect to COVID, we did learn an awful lot this year about PPE and really the communities, communities not prepared for this pandemic, in my opinion. Are we, have we changed our strategy on how we are prepared for a pandemic with PPE?
We do have our logistics manager. The goal is to keep a supply, a steady supply that's constantly going through, that we always have, I don't want to say the word stockpile, but that we always have a, an amount that can help us sustain if there's any gaps in resources. And it would just be a constant inventory flow of coming in and going out.
And this is a new plan that started since the pandemic?
It's more of a centralized plan, yes, sir.
Okay, and what about a mass vaccination plan? Do we have something that we've developed that I've heard, I've heard that we've had one for a long time ago, but wasn't necessarily used this time? I don't know, do you want to comment on that or not?
That's, that's in collaboration with the Health Department. They'd be best to answer the intimate details of the mass vaccination plan. But there are plans and there were many tweaks that have been made along the way with this pandemic with lessons learned.
All right, I'll probably talk to them about that then. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lopez?
You said this is for five employees. Is that able to, if someone quits, is that something that can be transferred to a new person? I know that's a problem we had a few times with software from where I came from. Could you clarify your question? If this is, if the license is for five employees, if one of those people leave, can you switch that to the next person?
Yes, yes. We have full control as far as who our users would be internally. We would administrate, we would administrate that process in the software.
So you would have like a power user here?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, Julie?
All right, thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, thank you. I hope the exercise that we did all witnessed went all right?
It did. We got lessons learned, which is what we always hope for, areas of improvement. And we're going to be doing some out briefs here in the next couple of weeks to get those details out. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, can I just, real quick, just comment that for some of these things you're hearing about, especially those PPE discussions, we're also asking that Emergency Management prepare this as a part of the needs assessment that we're going to do for the American Recovery Act Plan. See if there's anything, any way we can use some of that funding to help us with some of those initiatives.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you.
Okay, next up will be Emergency Medical Service, page 378, and Director Dr. John Gallagher.
Morning, Dr. Gallagher.
Morning, Commissioners. John Gallagher, Director of EMS. Always an honor to see you. So the mission for the Department of EMS is that Sedgwick County EMS is committed to providing equality out of hospital healthcare experience for our community. Our organization is divided into a branch structure. Three primary branches of administration, operations, and clinical oversight. Our mission and services is that we are the exclusive provider of EMS response for all of the cities and rural areas within Sedgwick County. All of our ambulances operate at the advanced life support level from both personnel and equipment. Additionally, we provide the scheduled and unscheduled transportation for people who need transport between our hospital and other facilities. We are dual-funded between a combination of user fees and tax subsidies. Challenges and opportunities before us over the next five years, primarily is our workforce recruitment and retention is our primary challenge. We've seen a decreased number of students enrolling in paramedic school, locally down as much as 50%. And this coupled with our inability to offer competitive salaries, which are currently substantially behind market. This was certainly amplified during the times of COVID as people started to appreciate the true risks of being in the profession. An opportunity for change would be the payment structure between ourselves and the hospitals for transferring patients between facilities. Right now, what we're charging is insufficient to cover those costs, and we're doing so at a loss. As requested, our budget request is flat. We've had some subtle adjustments across all of the categories. But in the end, the final request is just over 21 million, which represents a slight decrease of almost 2% for a change. Our revenue targets for '22 come from approximately 77% fee for service and 23% from tax revenue for a total of 21 million, 21.1 million. for a total of 21 million, 21.1 million. Our personnel is divided 97% into the EMS special fund and 3% into the general fund, for a total of 15.9 million. Manager's office has selected three of our decision packages to be presented this morning. The first is a contracted pay-for-education program that would allow us to send funded positions to both EMT and paramedic school. This proposal will cover their fees and tuition, and it'll also allow them to continue pulling a paycheck while they're doing so. In plain language, this would be, they would be paid to go to school, as well as work some shifts as a part-time status. In exchange, they are expected to satisfy full-time employment for two years at the EMT level and four years at the paramedic level. The total cost on this is 185,502, and represents six positions for paramedics and six positions for EMTs. We may not actually need to fill all of those, but that would be the, that would be the highest level of cost if we filled all 12 positions. The second one is a request for funding-
Doctor, excuse me, doctor.
Sir.
Commissioner Cruz. Thank you, Chairman. Is that just a one-time ask?
No, we would want to be able to do that continually.
Continue the data. Okay. Thank you.
And as follows, so this would be, and they would commit to a couple of years of service here and there?
Correct. So at the EMT level, the payback would be two years of service, and at the paramedic level, the payback would be four years of service.
Okay. So how do we assure that they, so we refund them after two years?
Correct. Well, it's, so we would, we would provide the payment, their, or their, their salary payment as they earn it on each paycheck, and we would cover the costs of their paramedic school and education. If they fail to satisfy the payback, or the time commitment, they would owe us.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Lopez.
I think you just answered my question, so I just wanted to see how that worked exactly. Do they, so they have to pay nothing out of pocket for school? We pay for all of it upfront?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is really the main target, because what we've heard from people is the barrier to going to school is they have to lose their earning potential. They have to either quit their job, or they have to go part-time status, and it's been a barrier to entry for education, because they can't afford to do so. So if we can keep them whole financially, it empowers them to pursue the education. In the end, we have both come out ahead. We have an employee, and they have an education.
Well, I think this is a good, and we did this at Ascension, and I know we had all kinds of nurses that used this, so I, I like this idea. Thank you.
I'd also add here, this has been a consultation with the legal office and with HR as well. So Mike is looking at the contract or the agreement for continued employment, so.
Okay. And Commissioner Cruz?
Just real quick, Commissioner Howell, if you don't mind. So this will have, you said six EMT and six paramedics?
Correct.
Is that sufficient? Do you think that there will be more need for that?
It wouldn't surprise me if we need more than that. We have to operate within the budget restraints, but something tells me if I need more, you'll help me.
Is there a qualification as to who gets it? So you have seven EMTs who want to do it. How do you decide which six get it?
So if we're truly capped at, at six, we would have to have a selection process for it. That hasn't been developed, but is one of the tasks for, if this is approved, we'll need to be done so.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. So today, how many EMT positions do we have open?
We have two.
Two. So that's really not the challenge, right? How many paramedic positions do we have open today?
19.
19. I heard the other day we had 20, but then I heard we got down to 18, but I heard two more quit, so I don't know. Changes seems like every day. So we'll go with the number 19, then. And how, and how long is this class going to be to convert an EMT into a paramedic?
So there's two versions. There's a 12-month program, and there's an 18-month program, and the contract is designed to support either. Interestingly, because of the way the hours play out, it comes out to the same price tag regardless, which is a phenomenon between how much time we're paying for them to be out of classroom versus how much time we're paying them to work as part-time status. But the 12-year and the 18-year program cost us the same.
So the theory is you take someone without any training at all, and you make them an EMT through this program?
That's one half of the program, yes.
Right. And that's, you find six people without experience, and we're going to turn them into six EMTs with this program. And then we're going to find six EMTs and turn them into six paramedics with this program.
Correct.
And it'll take 12 to 18 months to convert an EMT into a paramedic?
Correct.
And, and again, it's not fair, but you divide that out, it's around $15,500 per year, per student. And of course, I'm sure the paramedics will, it'll take longer for them, obviously, so they'll, they'll take, they'll take more of the money to do that, so it's not, I guess my point is this, it's not, it's not, it's not a short-term solution to the problem we have today.
Correct.
It's not. And I don't think we actually have a problem with EMTs. The problem right now is with paramedics.
Agreed.
You know, I don't know why the program would be focused on EMTs at all. No offense to EMTs, I love them, but the problem right now is paramedics. So you can't run an ambulance without a paramedic, so that's where our biggest concern.
So when the program was built, we felt it made the most sense to create for both levels, but I completely agree with you. The primary focus at this point is paramedics. We may not even need to use any of the six slots for EMTs.
What's the obligation back from the employee? What's the obligation back to Sedgwick County EMS after they've been given essentially, you know, $30,000 worth of tuition?
So at the EMT level, it's two years of service. At the paramedic level, it's four years of service.
And what's our clawback if they don't do that?
I'm sorry?
What's our clawback if they don't do that?
They're-
It's after graduation, I assume.
Correct. So in collaboration with legal, they've developed contracting that obligates them to a payback proportionally for the amount of time served and the amount of money given.
So I have another concern, because we have a whole lot of paramedics that invested their own $40,000 to get there, and I don't know if they're going to feel like this is unfair to them, that these other people are coming up and getting essentially, their, their $40,000 is basically being granted to them by government through tax dollars, whereas they invested $40,000 on their own. I, I think this is a nice program, but I don't know that it's going to solve any of our problems today. And this idea that the pipeline of people is the issue, I don't think that's the issue. The, and I'll get into the other issue in just a moment, but I'll listen to the rest of your presentation first. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions this time. Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
If we do have less people who want to be EMTs, can we transfer some of that money and use like two of those to pay for a paramedic? Is that something that could be done?
You could. You'd fall short, though. The EMT programs are dramatically less expensive.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I could, I could, if you, you might get one extra paramedic if you didn't use any of the EMT slots.
Okay.
Roughly.
All right.
All right. The second decision package is a request for replacement of the training mannequins. So you may recall, approximately four or five years ago, when we outfitted the simulation center, we bought a complement of four high-fidelity training mannequins. The most frequently used two, which are the adolescent and the adult training mannequins, are reaching end of life and will need to be replaced. We would like to do so before they fail. In order to do that, that would require 213,064.
Sorry, I was chuckling. A mannequin has an end of life, of course, what you're saying, so.
Ours have died many times.
Okay. They only, they only die so many times.
They've fortunately been saved many times, too.
True. Okay. All right. Good. I'll leave it at that. Commissioner Cruz.
What do you guys do with the, the mannequins that you replace? You do with the old ones?
So it depends on what we can work out. So sometimes we can work out a trade-in with the manufacturer and get some value back. When that's not possible, or is just a bad deal, we can oftentimes keep them for low fidelity training. So when the complicated electronics no longer work, they can still function as a, as a low-tech mannequin. So they're pretty creative.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Lopez.
What's the average lifespan of these mannequins? Is it four years? Is that normal?
This doesn't feel out of sorts, if that's what you're asking. It, it's incredibly dependent on how much use they get, and that also explains why our other two mannequins, the infant and the labor and delivery mannequins, aren't at that point, despite being the same age. It's a function of usage.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So the third, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
The third decision package is a request for a full-time FTE within our logistics support division. So over the last couple of years, both due to COVID and also due to advances within the department, we have substantial amount of increased materials, as well as technology that's being used in the department, that's put an extra drain on our logistics staff. So we, we are at the point where we believe that we can justify an additional FTE at the cost of 60,0061. That would be to support logistics.
Okay.
Or, any questions, sir?
I don't see any on that.
Okay. So in total, the decision packages add up to 459217, with a total of one FTE. On the other side of the balance, we do have one revenue package to discuss. This is the contract payment between the hospitals and ourselves for inter-facility transfers. So when we started looking at this, our existing contracts under the new leadership, we found that we had not only an imbalance between what the hospitals were being charged, essentially we were charging different hospitals different rates, we were also, at the end of the day, collecting insufficient funds to operate that portion of our functions. In plain language, we were subsidizing the hospital work with our other funds. That was felt to be not the right thing to do, and while we don't believe that the government-run system should generate a profit, we also don't think that they should put a burden on the taxpayers, and therefore, we should operate this service to the hospitals as an at-cost model. So in order to do so, we would need to start charging those services not only flat across the different facilities, but also at a level that meets the top costs it takes to deliver the service. So if we do so, if we increase to that level and apply that across the system uniformly, we will see an increase in revenue of almost $800,000.
Well, assume the hospitals are, will be open to this discussion?
Well, it's going to be a spread. There's, some of, some of the hospitals will be seeing a rate decrease from this, who have been historically overcharged. However, some will see quite the opposite.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have a question about that. I, I do think as long as we provide it.
Thank you, Tony. I don't have a question about that. I think as long as we're providing that service to the hospitals, it's appropriate that we receive the revenues to do that, to do that job, and I think it's a nice partnership with them. I do have a question regarding the, the budget proposal. I see on post 10 and on post 17, there's still money in the budget, in the 2022 budget for those two posts, but I understand they're not, they're not, they're currently not operating.
So the, the design of the cost centers for the department is divided amongst the individual EMS posts. However, it's not how those funds are actually used. To be frank with you, that's a frustrating area for us in, in managing the funds, because when we see how the expenditures happen, they happen across the system. They don't happen specific to an individual post, even down to the level of the personnel. While they may be assigned to that post for a portion of their work, they're assigned to other posts for other portions. So it, it's, it's an area worth assessing.
Mr. Manager, again, when we look at the budget, in the budget, there's a lot of information that you provided in terms of material around, around the, the numbers, and I, I want to question, I guess, everything I'm seeing in front of this. And so one of the things that happened a few years ago, we used to have a nine-minute response time commitment, and you've changed it to 11 minutes. We used to have, in the daytime, 21 ambulances on the streets. Now we have the goal of 19. So we've, we've reduced that. We've lost, we used to have two paramedics on an ambulance, now we have one paramedic and one EMT. And frankly, because we have a shortage of paramedics, we're actually not even doing that today, because we, we're not able to put the ambulances out. In fact, today, if I understand correctly, today, we're not running ICT-1, because we don't have enough paramedics. We have four ambulances down. Medics 25, 38, 26, and 41 are not operating today, because we don't have paramedics to fill these ambulances. And so the, the public needs to know, we're not providing the same service, level of service we were a couple of years ago. And I think that needs to be noted. And so this is part of the budget today. I want to, I want to talk about the fact that this budget proposal, in my opinion, may be lacking one decision package. And the decision package needs to be what's it going to take to fix this problem. You say on slide number, well, one of your first slides, it says, on slide 26 on my, on my slide package, that the work, the challenges are workforce recruitment and retention. I think retention's our number one problem. Recruitment hasn't been a problem until the last couple of years. And it says, due to the decreased number of students enrolling in paramedic school, again, I don't know if that's been the problem in the past, and that we perceive that's the problem today. And I think one of your first decision package today to provide training, think about this, if someone's on duty today, and they're providing services today, now we're going to take that person out of our staff and send them to school someplace else, not providing services in Sedgwick County, and we're going to pay them to increase their skill set to the next level up. That actually causes even additional pressure on the remaining people that are in our staff. We're adding pressure to them by allowing this other student to go in and do, do improvement, self-improvement. And that's wonderful. But the reality is, the pressure of the remaining staff is, is, it can't be, we can't just expect that to, to accept more pressure. And so I, that first decision package, I have a problem with that. And, and this idea that it's coupled with the inability to, inability to offer competitive salaries, substantially behind market, and amplified during the pandemic, these problems started before March of 2020. And I'll tell you right now, by my count, since our former director of EMS left, we've lost 93 paramedics, well, paramedics slash EMTs, mostly paramedics. I'll take that back. It's, it's a combination of both. And since the merger in August of 2019, we've lost 73. And today, we've got 19 openings for paramedics, and we don't have a plan to solve that problem. And it's not due to the pipeline, it's due to other, it's not due to the pay. And we had 100 and, 129 or 130 of your staff, which is by fact, by far the vast majority of the organization that does street-level service to this community, met with Tom Stoltz and Rusty Leeds and myself. I didn't say a word, I stood back and listened. But four hours of testimony by 130 people who attended, and roughly 40 of them spoke up and talked about the reasons why people are leaving, or the reasons why many of them are still planning to leave. And they were very clear, it's not about pay. It's, it's about the reorganization that happened in 2019 primarily, and leadership issues. And so I want to be very clear, these, these things you said on this slide here, I completely disagree with. This is, this is, my, my problem with this, it's a false narrative. The problem is not pay. We have other structural management level issues that need to be fixed. And I'm, Tom, I appreciate you, we're going to, we're going to go get the information finally. I think we're on the right track now to hone in on some scientific reasons as to why we're seeing this high attrition and low morale. And, but let me just be very clear, in a budget meeting like today, I don't think that this idea of training's going to solve the problem, certainly not soon, in fact, it's going to add pressure. I'm very concerned about that. And I think we're missing a decision package. That's what's going to take to actually solve this problem structurally within the organization. It's not in front of me today. I can tell you, I have, I have some ideas on how we have to do that, but I'll, I'll raise that when I talk with you privately later on. Thank you, thank you for the chance to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Howell. I, I think it's also worth the public to know that manager Stoltz and myself, we had a, a one-hour conversation Zoom call with senior management of the largest private provider of ambulance service in the country. And without us even asking anything, they said the single most problem nationwide is the shortage of paramedics. They said it is a big problem, and they have all, they are migrating as well. They have an operation, this, what we just talked about, this nurse, nurse online, 911 connection, things like that. So that's, but it was a very interesting conversation we had, and obviously no obligation, we were just trying to get information. And so having that was surprising to me. I thought maybe it was regional in a few areas, but Tom, do you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
I don't, I don't disagree with any of this conversation. I think staffing is all of our concerns.
Yeah.
Needs to be the forefront. As Commissioner mentioned, we are going to dive deeper into this with an outside analysis. I know Johnson County is 20-plus paramedic short. Other entities we have talked to are undergoing the same issues, but we need to find out locally what the issue is here. We're working on that.
Right. Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm sure when I'm finished talking, my Commissioner Howell will come back in, because anything that doesn't meet his narrative is absolutely wrong. So I'm sure that everything I say will be absolutely wrong. But what I want to do is, is stress the fact that, let me back up. My entire career has been advancement through education. I didn't get to where I was at today if I wasn't educated. And through my career, whatever organization I worked for, helped with that education so that they knew that if, if I got a better education, that I'd be a better leader in the next position that I took, whatever organization I was in. So I applaud the decision package that you've come up with to educate your staff, because that makes them better performers and better leaders in the future. So I strongly support the decision package that you came forward with. I was also very disappointed. Commissioner Howell mentioned that there were a couple of meetings recently, and Commissioner Meitzner and I were prohibited from attending. I've, I'm totally 100% baffled that they would say that a commissioner couldn't attend a meeting. But we didn't. So where are we at today? As Commissioner Howell alluded to, we're going to have an independent audit of EMS as we go forward to take a look at exactly what's going on and what we need to do to improve it. And that's really, there, there does not need to be a decision package in this budget right now, because we don't know what the outcome is, and we're trying to get through this. But as we move forward, we do need to take a look at things and see what we can do better. So I see that Commissioner Howell's light's on, so everything I said is invalid. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's talk, let's talk about the pipeline of people interested in filling these jobs. Three years ago, I talked, one of the, one of the people that spoke at the meeting, she said that when, when she applied to become a Cedric County EMS paramedic, that she was one of 19 people vying for two positions. And that's, that was the culture back then. Other places in the country may, may experience pipeline shortages of people who qualified to fill these positions, but that wasn't normal for Cedric County EMS. We were, I've said this, I've said this a dozen times or maybe more, we were, we were known nationally as probably the very best EMS system in the entire country. And I think we're very proud of that history. We had, we had recognition everywhere that we were the best. And when we went around, people, when they learned we were from Cedric County EMS, we could, we could be very proud of the fact, they knew who we were. And today, that culture, the reputation of Cedric County EMS is taken, has gone clear to the other side of the spectrum at this point, for a number of reasons. The reason that the two commissioners were asked not to attend that meeting was because this was not my meeting. This was a meeting that was called by the paramedics and by the EMTs. They wanted to speak with Mr. Manager, and it was appropriate to bring in our Assistant County Manager of Public Safety, Rusty Lees. And so they were both invited to be there. They wanted, in fact, without Tom Stoltz, it wouldn't have mattered to even have a meeting. The whole point of this was the paramedics and EMTs wanted to speak with Tom Stoltz. They called the meeting. So I put the meeting together at their request. And I, I say this, but they've, they've talked with some of these commissioners, and they've, they don't believe that you're open to hearing them. That's why they don't, they, they wanted to have some free exchange of, of information, felt like your presence was not going to be conducive to allowing them to speak freely. I have been very strong supporter of tuition assistance programs for our employees. I brought this up numerous times over my six years of service here in Cedric County. But I think it should be available to everyone, and it should be available to these folks. But I don't want to add pressure to the remaining staff in how we do this. And so I think, this is not like LATC, where you take someone off the street and turn them into a commissioned law enforcement officer. It's not like 911. There's no other place to really get that type of training. And 911 has to provide that, because it's extremely unique to what they do, specifically and how they do it. But this is training that these folks can get, these, these folks can get credentialed in the private sector, and it's very available, the training is very available, that you can go numerous places in our community to get this type of training. But to, to, to add more pressure to our remaining staff, I think is unacceptable. And the reality is, I would support a tuition assistance program that encourages every, every employee to improve their skill set. And we should subsidize and assist them and help them to get that tuition at a lower cost if possible, to encourage everyone to improve themselves. That's, it's a very good idea. And with that, I think it's all my comments I need to say, let me just say, finally, I was going to say this finally, let's be very clear, they were, they were absolutely adamantly clear, this has never been a pay problem. These folks know, coming into this, coming into the organization about what we pay. In fact, we paid better today than we did three years ago. They've had some small increases, they, maybe they're falling behind compared to inflation rates, for example, but the pay has never really been the problem. It's not substantially different than it's been in the past. We've given them some small pay raises to keep up the cost of living. They knew what they were going to get paid when they came in. They wanted to, they wanted to work for us because we were the best in the nation. That's what's changed. Something about the culture of our organization has changed. And that's what needs to be the focus today. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say that we are certainly aware that there are challenges within this department. And some of those challenges are very, very important to address. And I was pleased to hear that we will be conducting interviews. So essentially, every single employee in our EMS department will have an opportunity to share how they feel this organization is being run, and I would hope that this is done quickly, as fast as possible, so when people are asked to participate, that they take it seriously and they do it when they're asked to participate. We do have a process to follow. I have received multiple emails from a lot of people in EMS, and I hear you. I hear your concerns. I believe your concerns, and I take them seriously. But I have to let this process play out, and I will stress, I'm looking in the manager right in the eye right now, that this has to be fast. And I know that he, I know that you want that too, Tom. I know that every single person in this, in this room wants this to happen as quickly as possible, because we want, we want for things to improve. That being said, every single person in EMS has an opportunity to be a leader, to make things better. You don't have to be at the top, you don't have to consider yourself at the bottom, to lead an organization to a more positive outlook. And so I, I get it, it is very tough, and I've had some pretty intimate conversations with folks, and I hear, I hear what's going on. Please believe me, if I haven't gotten back to you, I hear you, and I am working to make things better, but we have to let this process play out. And that, that's how I sit on this, and I will be an advocate for all sides, so that we can hear this report and make sure that we have heard every voice, in, in a way that is not in a, no one's going to get punished from this. This is, this is an independent audit by an independent firm who has no skin in this game, other than to make, give us a report that will help us make this better. So I will end it with that, and I appreciate the opportunity to address this, because it's very important that we make sure that our employees understand, we hear them, we believe them, and we want to help them make this better. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gallagher, for your presentation and for the decision packages. We don't usually have a decision package that increases revenues, but that's well-received too, and good luck with, with that future. And so, but the decision packages are well-presented, and, and I think, I believe they'll be supported. Okay. Don't see any other comments. We are pretty much on time. We were a little bit ahead of schedule, and this one went a little bit long, but that's all right. It was, it was worth the discussion, so, okay. Next up. I think the Fire District?
Next up will be your Fire District, page 449, and Chief Doug Williams will present for the Fire District.
Okay. Good morning, Chief. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Williams, Fire Chief. We'll start off with our organizational chart, and our organizational charts broke down into the three divisions. The Fire Prevention Division, the Operations Division, and the Administration piece. When we look at our funding services, we are highly tax, property tax-driven. I don't think that's a secret. Large percentage, 90% of our money comes from tax revenue. We do have a small amount we get from license permit fees, and the, the reviews we do for MABCD and for plans review, we get a small amount of money for. We have some charges for services, which is the Raytheon and Hazmat Response for the State Fire Marshal's Office. And then we have a 1% revenue that's generated from such things as Purple Wave auctions of our surplus equipment, or any reimbursements we get. Our, our response area is 618 square miles. This is a, a large geographical area for a career department, and it creates its challenges. But we protect approximately 70,550 residents, and that includes the unincorporated areas of the county, as well as protecting the cities of Andale, Bel Air, Key Chay, Hayesville, Goddard, Park City, Mays, Bentley, Garden Plain, Viola, and Furley. The challenges that we, we see in our five-year upcoming challenges is recruiting, hiring, and retaining quality firefighters. We've seen some attrition in our, in our firefighting ranks, and we've been losing employees, both to the larger departments, our neighbor across the street, and we also have lost some to smaller departments. Some of this has been through some pay issues and some compensation plan issues. We, we think that that's been a creation of some of those issues. One of our big challenges is the, when we lose staff, it takes us a certain period of time to replace them, which creates some, some challenges with our staffing, and creates mandatory callback staffing, as well as at times running short-staffed. One of our other challenges that we're working on over the course of, is the consolidation project with Wichita Fire. We're working very diligently on reducing our exposure to harmful carcinogens. Firefighters, it's starting to show, is cancer is a long-term risk factor in our firefighters, so we're taking a lot of steps as far as policies to clean gear, policies to get, get the gear off of them quicker, and also to have worshers and get them, get their gear cleaned up, so they're not wearing carcinogen-coated gear in a long period of time. Some of the opportunities we have is the functional consolidation programs with Wichita Fire. This has created our enhanced responder agreement, which has brought down our deployment model. One of the things that we look at in a deployment model is what they call an effective deployment, and that is getting the necessary resources on scene quickly for an effective response versus just the number of resources that eventually show up. And our enhanced responder agreements with Wichita has greatly enhanced that effective deployment model. Where our training, we've done several training exercises with Wichita Fire, and now we're working harder to get our fire prevention and investigation teams intermingled and intermeshed. We've also put in, and we're working with Wichita Fire on possibility of, of some space at the Regional Training Center through a capital improvement project. Out of these fifth-in-department strategic plans, and that's where identifying opportunities for consolidation, which improves service delivery for the public, develop a recruitment plan to enhance the number and quality of employee candidates. One thing we're, we're focusing on very, very hard right now is, is our diversity issues, as well as women firefighters. We recognize nationwide that the percentages for women firefighters is way below the demographic. I don't think that's any secret. But we're working on a recruitment strategic to that, and also to increase the physical, mental, and health of our firefighters, and reduce the mental health and the suicide issues that we're seeing in first responders. The 2022 budget request is the personnel budget of 15,203,987. Contractuals is going to reduce a slight amount to 2,263,329. Debt service will be 1,244,627. And the commodities, 828,537. And our equipment, what we call small equipment, is the 325,000. And all that comes up to a request of 19,865,480. And that is 2.5%. And my understanding is that's based on our valuation change for the Fire District at the same mill levy. Our decision package, the only one we submitted, we pared it down to just one for this, this year. Our decision package was to take a temporary fire training officer and make that a full-time FTE. The rationale for that is to continue our functional consolidation efforts with Wichita. We're requesting the addition of one FTE to staff a fire training officer position for the department. This position will coordinate the recruit training, department-wide training, and emergency training, as well as coordinate and liaison with Wichita Fire Department and other fire partners to develop inter-agency training. This position will work out of the Wichita's Regional Training Center. And one of the things with COVID-19 is, this position was just, the importance of it was really shown dealing with the COVID last year. I don't know how we'd have got through a lot of that training program without this position as a temporary. The fire training officer has improved our quality, frequency, and consistency of training. We conducted three department-wide drill cycles last year involving live-fire drills. We've never done that in our history. The Cedric County Fire Department crews completed approximately 150 live burns and search and evolutions. The joint training with WFD was two of the drills. We had a joint training with Wichita Fire that was with their truck companies and our interior attack crews coordinating timing and, and on a live-fire training together. And the second one was Wichita Fire's engine companies with our attack crews and our tenders to help Wichita Fire understand operating in a tender in a reduced water environment. We also had a basement drill, live-fire cycle, that we put all of our firefighters through. One of the things that we've identified with having a fire training officer that we've never, ever had in our department is that he evaluates all of our crews. When he's at all of the scenes and all of the events, he gets to see every one of our people go through, and we've never had that before. You know, before, we have shift leaders and shift supervisors tell us who their weak people are and who their strong people are, and that's generally tainted by, by some buddies and friendships and those type of cycles. It's been really valuable to us, when our fire training officer comes back and gives us information that is a lot more unbiased across the board, and we find out that maybe the shift supervisor's buddy station isn't as good as he says they are, and maybe the crew he doesn't like is better than he says they are. And, and that's been a huge benefit to us, to build consistency and understand where we're at. The, another thing we found out with the fire training officer is that Derby, Wichita Fire and us, that are running calls together every day, multiple times every day, our, even our May Day drill was not the same. We didn't call a May Day the same, we didn't respond to a May Day the same, and our codes weren't the same. So when we're operating together, our, the most critical firefighter down, firefighter lost cycle, we were not operating with consistent SOPs and policies. And, and that's another thing that we've changed now, where we've gone to the same, where we're trying to build all of our SOPs and, and scene operations functional and exactly the same. And it's been a huge piece of having that training officer. And with the request of the training officer, it'd be captain-level position, has totally benefited to come out at 119,184. And that's everything.
I have a question. Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, thanks for being here today. We appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions. One goes back to mutual aid. I've, I've been concerned about mutual aid ever since I've been a commissioner. You're aware of that. If we have a fire at Colwich today, at that ethanol plant, will you dispatch initially, or will you wait till they call for you?
Our, our request with Colwich, it would be a tender under request.
And is everything under request?
With Colwich.
Okay. For what, what about other cities?
No, we have some automatic aid agreements with some of the others.
I thought we were working those.
Working on them?
Yeah.
We've reviewed all those, but.
But we're still going to be first responder? My concern comes from, we have a number of people, 70,000 or so, I think you indicated in here, that they're paying 18,000. the exact same service. That is not fair to the people that are paying 18 mils. And I've said that over and over again. So I am very concerned when we're taxing people and giving the services to someone else. So unless we can start working some mutual aid agreements that are going to benefit Sedgwick County, I'm not happy with your budget. And that brings me to the second part. A couple of years ago, when we hired you on as the chief, we had two contenders, and we hired both. And the reason for the second one was for consolidation. And today, you bring me a package, and when I think about consolidation, I'm thinking about some way that we work together and we reduce cost for the taxpayers. But today, you bring me a package that consolidation increases the cost to the taxpayers. So right now, I wouldn't vote for your decision package, to tell you the truth, because I can't see that anything is happening in consolidation that is beneficial to fire district number one. So I don't, I don't know what the future holds, but if we don't see some benefit, I, we might as well just forget about consolidation, because it's costing us money. It's not working. If it was working, you wouldn't be bringing me a decision package, telling me we need more money to consolidate. So I guess two problems that I've got is we're not, I'm not going to continue to tax people and give those services to someone else for free, and I'm not going to continue to worry about consolidation at all unless I can see some, some kind of successes, and this is not a success. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lopez?
I do have a question about the consolidation. Where is, I mean, where does Wichita stand with this? Because we can't do this without them being on board as well. So how does that play?
We, we had a meeting with the county manager and the city manager, and Chief Snow and myself, and Mr. Leeds, and the deputy chiefs involved. And we met last week, and we went through all of where we've been with the, every piece of consolidation and where we need to go. And one of the, one of the hangups we have is in the budget piece. And, and it was decided at that meeting to create a report that Chief Crisp and Chief Pavelsky on Wichita Fire are going to jointly create a white paper report that will, is supposed to be done within 30 days to give you a total, full view of where they see our accomplishment is and where they see us going in the near future.
Oh, that'd be really good to see. Okay. And we got to this point years ago, and maybe I'm wrong in learning about what happened before, but didn't we have an agreement just about done? And then, I think it was the budget that stopped it?
I, I think that's been a hangup on many occasions. I wasn't intimately involved in the, in the ones in the past, but historically, I think the digging into our budgets pretty clear, theirs isn't, because they have a lot of revenue sources that feed their budget, and it's been a challenge to, to sort all that out.
And with this consolidation, is this how we got to where you expanded that black line, or whatever color that line was on the map?
Correct.
And has that had a cost savings, or what has that done for the county?
One of the things that done is, it's been a small cost savings, because we're not sending trucks across the county as much as we used to. But one of the biggest advantages in a, in a response issue, because when we talk about effective deployment, that is a derived scene that says, okay, you have to have a certain amount of personnel and a certain amount of equipment on scene within four to five minutes to make an effective response. And, you know, when we have a truck going 15 to 20 miles versus one coming out of Wichita, two or three miles, that changes our effective response. It brings it way, way down, you know? And we've gone, and we would have to pull those numbers, and our software's terrible. We're working on changing that, too. But we've drastically reduced the second, third units on scene times, which has changed that effective response model vastly, and this, that agreement has done that.
Okay. Well, I mean, it sounds like there has been some positive changes while working on this. I would really like to see when that report is done in the 30 days, and that, I'll look forward to seeing that. So, thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. To the issue of consolidation, I think we've been talking about consolidation for probably more than 30 years at this point. I've seen numerous reports. I've got them in my office of takeaways, trying to figure out how to consolidate Wichita and Sedgwick County Fire. And it, obviously, is very complex. It's not as easy as it sounds, and there's lots of reasons why it's complex. But again, let's be clear, no one's going to be forced into consolidation. We have to be lured in. People have to want to be consolidated for a reason, and the reason would be probably around efficiency and effectiveness, which means better services for less cost, if you can possibly get that together. And the question is, how do you do that? And so I agree with Commissioner Dennis that we did hire somebody for, to explore this. And let me just remind you, one of the first things we did when he got here was I sat down with you and Tom Stoltz and others, spent two hours going through an idea I've been working on for several years now, it precedes all the other commissioners here, talking about consolidation over time. It's a plan that actually works. We, legal spent money trying to find out legislatively or legally, can we even get there? And they said, it came back and said, yes, you can. It seems to work. We spent two hours talking about this. I haven't heard a single word response since that day regarding the consolidation over time idea. Let's be clear, Station 38 right now, Wichita's pulled out. Am I correct about that?
No, they're back in.
They're back in. Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. For a time there, the county was basically carrying the burden at a dual station that's supposed to provide services to Wichita specifically. They were carrying the burden for them. Go ahead.
They were moved out because they had a different COVID policy than we did, and it didn't match, and we felt it was better to not have them all in the same building. That was a protection of our personnel issue and from our point of view.
I'll just say this. I think the county is more interested in consolidation than the city is, and I think there's, there's natural barriers as to why they're not going to want to go forward. We need to recognize that, and if it's not going to happen, let's just move on. I have one other question. Is the, is the black line that we talked about, is that, is that a static line, or does it dynamically move based on situation?
No, it does not move. That was put in place in the late 2000s, is when it was put in place, when they worked on consolidation efforts in the, I can't tell you the exact year, but in the 2005, 2006 range. Wichita Fire put that in place, because they didn't want their engine companies and truck companies going outside of that black line area. And at that time, it was, it was drawn to where it did not include any of the small cities in the county. It didn't include Hayesville or Belair. It included parts of Belair, but it did not include Mays, or Hayesville, or Park City, or Goddard. And obviously, they intended not to go out beyond that line at that time, and we have since pushed that line out.
Back to the issue of consolidation, I think the low-hanging fruit here is training. And again, if we, if our equipment is similar, if our processes and procedures are similar, if their people could basically assist us with our equipment, because they've been trained on the same stuff, or vice versa, if we could help them with theirs, if our radios were the same, things like that, that would be functional consolidation. Those are things we ought to be doing, no matter what we do with the two governing organizations. I think the functional part of this obviously needs to happen. With that, with that in mind, what, you said you had three training events this last year at the Regional Fire Training Center, I assume?
Correct.
Was there a desire to do more than three? I mean, that's, that seems fairly, that doesn't seem like a big number to me. Three's not a lot, but...
Well, the thing that you, you have to realize with the Regional Training Center, when you're doing live burns, they only have one burn training building. So you can only do four to six a day. Each crew goes down there and does three at a time. And when we have 27 crews and they have 60-some, you have 87 crews that are going down there to do, to use one prop, which, you know, a possibility of 200 days a year of training, and 200 days a year on one prop, but we ran 150 times we ran our crews through there. So, so I think that one of the problems we have with the RTC is it looks like a tremendous, big, huge environment, but it still only has one live-fire prop there that we use, and it is very schedule-oriented.
And I know Wichita owns that, and they get to own and operate it to their pleasure, but to the extent that people don't care whose name is on the side of the fire truck, they just want their, they just want these services to come when they need them. And to the extent that we can, you know, if that facility's not being utilized to the, to the maximum capability, and we have a desire to do more training, we need to solve for a yes somehow to make that happen. I don't know if they need some money from Sedgwick County. Again, that decision package is not in front of us today, but if there's a way we could, you know, pay for some service, you know, pay for some access to training, if that's what's necessary, I would be interested in hearing that. But I agree with Commissioner Dennis. I don't know that I would agree with the decision package that you've submitted today, because I think we have a person right now that's not being utilized for why he was hired. I think we should, you know, hopefully be able to cover that need with the person we have right now that's not being utilized for the purpose why he was hired. So with that, my final question would be this. What's our relationship with Colwich today? Are they inside the fire district or outside?
Colwich is, Union Township is not in the fire district.
They don't pay fire district taxes?
No.
Okay.
There's, there's some select people that have partitioned in, but outside of that, no.
Okay. And so when there's a call in Colwich, are we dispatching, Colwich has a volunteer department, I assume?
Correct.
Are we, are we dispatching their department to their own calls first? Or are we, under mutual aid, going in there? What's happening in terms of who responds to Colwich?
Our mutual aid for Colwich is under a request.
And so when they request, we, we show up?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll dig into more, more into that one later on my own time, but thank you for your answers today.
Respectful of time. We've got a couple more questions from commissioners, and let's try to keep this on, on schedule if we can. Commissioner Lopez, sorry.
Okay, thank you. When you're talking about you wanting to do a software upgrade, and I know we spoke about that before, is that something that would be compatible with Wichita if we tried to go that route? Or is, I mean, are they in need of new software, too? Is that something we could try to look at together? What does that look like?
Our firehouse software is the same package Wichita uses, and they, they have it into life this year. And we're currently working on a decision pack, or a TRB with the IT department. And we've got a package together, working with us, Wichita Fire, and EMS, all three, heading hopefully towards the same software.
Yeah, that, but that would be huge, because I don't see how you can combine if you don't have that. I mean, that's the biggest piece, I would imagine. And then I just had a question about the position that you have now that's been mentioned a few times, and maybe I'm remembering our conversation wrong, but wasn't that a position we've had before that was cut because of budget issues? And so now they're continuing, I mean, doing the role that they did before as well as this, and that's why you're wanting an additional?
Yes, that position that was added, we reduced a chief officer position and admin in, I think, 2013 timeframe. And so the position that the, the Chief Crisp is in now is taking, he has taken on all of those responsibilities of the budget, HR issues for a department, as well as working on the consolidation piece. And the training officer in the decision package, one thing, when we go down to Wichita Fire Department to participate with them, they've got a staff of six or seven people that are providing the evolutions that we're going through. So all we're asking is to add the one to kind of offset our costs. I mean, that goes along with where we feel our obligation. It's, it's hard for us to go down and say, give us training, but we're not going to put a person down there. This, this is putting a person down there that will be conducting all of our training there, as well as helping them. And so right now, to do a live burn, it takes six to seven instructors at a time, and we're only providing, we're one in a temporary position now, and we're trying to make that full-time.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I have a couple, just a couple quick questions. Did you, did you mention earlier that you're having trouble retaining employees?
Yeah, we've lost eight employees in the past year and a half to outside departments.
Okay. So was it, what was the reason, do you think?
Well, we've lost some to Wichita Fire, and we've lost some to the neighboring smaller departments. And one of the things that, that we believe is that the pay's at issue, that right now, Wichita's starting pay is 8.9% above ours, and we have 67 firefighters that could go over to Wichita Fire and, and make more money. And we believe that's an impact. But, you know, they're a bigger department, and we know that, too, but we weren't seeing this years and years ago. One of the other things, we're losing to other departments that have caught up to our pay scale, departments we used to steal from are now stealing from us. And we, we think that's a pay issue also, because their pay has caught us.
So on the topic of consolidation, this has been a topic since day one that I started here, and to hear it's going on for 30 years. I think it's an unrealistic expectation that we, that it falls at your feet to solve it. I think we know that it's more, more than just you that has to be involved in this. And over the past couple of years, I have seen you actively engaged, understanding that this is not an easy thing to accomplish when you have so many people involved. I, too, believe that this is more Sedgwick County kind of pushing this along, rather than it being sort of, we both want to, to see this happen. And so that's kind of what I've thought since day one. But I just, I, I am excited to see the report that's going to come out, and I'm looking forward to that. But I just kind of want to let you know that there are people who recognize that this is more than just you, that is responsible, that is carrying this burden to consolidate two departments that have been operating independently for such a long time. So I appreciate your work on this, and we understand that we're excited about this report that's coming out. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief, I don't see any other questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Next up.
Okay, the next department will be the Regional Forensic Science Center, page 465, and Dr. Shelley Stedman, the director, will be presenting.
Good morning, Dr. Stedman. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. Shelley Stedman, Director, Regional Forensic Science Center. Thank you in advance for listening to the challenges and needs of the Regional Forensic Science Center today. Our primary mission is, well, there's two parts, really, to our facility. And to address both, we strive to provide the highest quality medical, legal, and advanced forensic laboratory service to Sedgwick County. Our death investigation and forensic autopsy services are conducted in a compassionate and objective manner to achieve accurate certification of the cause and manner of death. And the forensic laboratory services provide unbiased and accurate analytical testing toward the resolution of criminal cases. We're an independent agency operating under the Division of Public Safety, and therefore we collaborate with public health and criminal justice stakeholders to reduce crime and ultimately prevent death. I have provided here a fairly oversimplified version of our organizational chart. If I would put up there, the one we use for accreditation, with all the double hats many of us wear, it wouldn't fit on the PowerPoint slide. So our admin sections and our quality assurance sections pretty much touch all aspects of the building, making sure our building infrastructure, our purchasing, receiving, that the phones are answered. On the quality side, we have folks who focus on making sure our protocols are in place, that we're in compliance with the latest scientific standards, that we can maintain accreditation. And that person is also heavily involved in mining the data that many of you come to me asking for, and the data that we're relying on today to talk about what our budget needs might be. That said, the two scientific divisions largely involve the forensic laboratories, and I didn't break that down, but the toxicology lab manager reports to me, as does the DNA lab manager, and our criminalistic lab manager oversees both drug ID and firearms examiners. I'm going to focus primarily on talking about our pathology side of the building today. And under pathology and autopsy, we currently just have, our organizational chart represents the medical doctors who serve as forensic pathologists, and we have three, one district coroner and two deputy coroners. Our medical investigations involves one supervisor and five medical investigators who rotate our on-call service, which is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And the chief medical investigator also oversees three pathology assistants who work with the doctors in the, in the autopsy service. And that might seem a little odd, and it is, and we're going to discuss that more thoroughly here in a minute. To give you some idea of the magnitude of the services we provide, in 2020, we received over 4,000 reports of death. Our medical investigators were on-site at nearly 550 scenes, and we conducted over 1,000 forensic autopsies. Those autopsies could be in the form of full autopsies, partials, externals, or record reviews. Our forensic laboratory services involve testing of about 15,000 exhibits, which were submitted by 45 different law enforcement agencies, and we provide expert testimony in court concerning our analytical findings. I was given the challenge of trying to explain how much of our operational costs are funded by the general fund and how much of that is grant-funded. And so I presented this... by 45 different law enforcement agencies. And we provide expert testimony in court concerning our analytical findings. I was given the challenge of trying to explain how much of our operational costs are funded by the general fund and how much of that is grant-funded. And so I presented this pretty basic chart, looking at the actuals for 2018 through 2020, as well as what I expect to spend with grant funds in 2021. And then also the actuals out of the general fund. And then throughout the course of those years, I present to you the average from grant funding is about $336,000. And our general fund is about 3.3 million. So if you look at the ratio graphically, about 10% of our operational costs are coming from grants. We do have a revenue source. We do carry out autopsies on out-of-county cases. So we provide autopsy services to other coroner districts throughout the South Central region of Kansas. And revenue, which is primarily a combination of autopsy and toxicology laboratory fees to carry out that service, is currently about $650,000. And I am going to talk about a revenue package today. And I would like to point out that the, while we do bill for those services, the money does not come back to the Regional Forensic Science Center budget for us to play with. It goes to the county. And so there would be no point, or I have nothing to gain by the revenue package that I am proposing today. It is merely an opportunity for the county to make sure that the supplies that are involved in providing that service and some of the extra staffing that it requires, that we are made whole for, for that service. Next, I'm going to talk a little bit about the challenges that we face at the Regional Forensic Science Center. Not to be a broken record, but retention of scientists after they are trained is, is a primary goal. And it has been a problem for many years. By example, from 2018 to 2020, we had 48% of our workforce leave. We currently have 50% of our scientific staff in training. That doesn't mean we're operating at 50% capacity because the 50% of the trained people have to divert their casework duties to train those who are in training. The reason why the 200 case DNA backlog is not on your radar yet is because, as Mr. Bennett explained yesterday, those cases are coming through the criminal justice system at a very slow rate. And so our need to get the analysis done on DNA cases has been extended to allow for us to catch up. In that lab, I have four qualified people training two new hires. In the toxicology lab, I have two qualified people training four new hires. So you can imagine the productivity and the, the effect that, that, that type of dynamic has and why we have delays in laboratory reports. And ultimately, when those laboratory reports are on post-mortem toxicology samples, it delays the overall autopsy report. I also want to take the opportunity to follow up on another comment that Mr. Bennett made yesterday regarding the increase in gun violence. And I want to let you know that the last three firearms examiners that Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center trained, which is a two-year program, they all clocked in at the Johnson County Crime Lab this morning. And so I think, given the information from Mr. Bennett and that trend, I think that should be important to you. What I'd like to focus on with the decision package that I'm going to present today is the overall increase that we have experienced in our, in our morgue. Last year, we had nearly 20% more coroner cases. The actual number, I believe, is 18.2. Another trend that we're seeing is an increase in unclaimed bodies. When we have bodies with no family, or the family is unable to claim the body and pay for the funeral services, by statute, it is our job to give those individuals a final disposition. Our new cooler that we installed towards the end of last year is accommodating anywhere from 20 to 25 bodies daily that are unclaimed. And we have one person who manages that indigent population, and that's our chief medical investigator. Our other challenges and needs surround ongoing equipment, software challenges, kind of story throughout the county, trying to manage those with grants. Sometimes the maintenance contracts are a little challenging because you can't pay for services outside the year that they're provided. We have some space limitations we're trying to address through our project that I've already talked to most of you about with the CIP. We're looking to re, you know, take another look at our internship program as a possible way to use, do some creative recruiting. Unfortunately, in 2020, that wasn't possible for us to, to start up. And the main reason for that was safety. And we do have a strategic plan which focuses on all of these challenges and includes our LIMs implementation, which is a, a lab-wide software, hopefully moving us towards a more paperless state and has been, we're in the midst of it. It's a monumental task. This is our budget overall, and it's, again, it's pretty flat. You will see big differences in contractuals and equipment. And the reason for that is, is that many of these grants are two or three years in term. And so I may receive a grant this year and not spend any of that money until next year, or I might receive a grant this year and spend all of it this year. And when you have multiple grants, simultaneous awards, a lot of expenditures may happen in one year and very few in the next, just due to the overlap in the timing of when those purchases occur. So other than the swings you see in equipment and contractuals related to grants, there's, there's very little difference. I'll move now to our decision package. The decision package this year is to request that we reestablish a chief pathology assistant position at the center. In 2009, budget cuts resulted in the elimination of our chief pathologist assistant, and it reduced the number of qualified pathology assistants in our facility from four full-time to three full-time positions. When I began at the Regional Forensic Science Center in 1997, we had two doctors and four pathology assistants. That two-to-one ratio over the course of time has dwindled down to a one-to-one ratio. We have an increased number of autopsies. If our workload is up 20%, that's more bodies in, more bodies out, more tox to collect, more evidence to document and release back to the funeral homes. It's more funeral homes showing up at our facility to pick up bodies while we have people working on autopsies and have to remove them from service in order to execute the body releases. And currently, well, after that position was eliminated, the supervising of those individuals was shifted to the chief medical investigator. And this person doesn't work in or office near the morgue. She fills in for the 24/7 call when one of the other investigators isn't able to. For example, someone has a minor surgery and can't work for a week while they recover. And thus, she gets flex time to, to be off for the days on, to compensate for those extra hours. So sometimes she's not even there. While she is an amazing, talented and qualified person, her skill set did not come from pathology. And so she doesn't personally train those people, which leaves our, our forensic pathologist to do that. And that's a very expensive way to deliver training to a technical person. This just gives an overview of the workload increase. And if you focus on the two cells in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see that in 2019, we did 894 autopsies. And this year, that's up to 1,057. And going back to our unclaimed body population, when I did a budget scenario for this, we've looked at how it's grown percentage-wise years passed, and I projected out through 2024, how many unclaimed bodies I thought we would have to provide a disposition for. But what I will tell you is that in 2021 so far, we have provided cremation services for 23 bodies. So that bar really looks more like this already. And if you look at how that's going to progress over time, I think this problem is going to be much greater in the years to come.
Dr. Stedman, what, what is the cost of those, you know, each disposition?
We currently have a contract, and I believe the cost is $450 per.
Per.
So this decision package is limited to the chief pathology assistant with a salary of, and including the benefits of $69,656. And if there are no questions about that, we can go through this revenue package overview really quick. We have a fee schedule that we use to bill for those out-of-county services. As again, most of those are autopsy and toxicology service. There will be an occasional case where we will have an unidentified body that's out of county, and the DNA lab will have to do identification through familial comparisons. And we would charge for that. So what we found, what I found, was I was looking at this fee sheet, and some of it wasn't very relevant anymore. It listed services that we, we don't provide or that are not within the scope of our accreditation. Some of the services, based on the, the supplies we need, were undervalued. And so we did, we, we pointed to those specifically, but there weren't, there were very few of those. We did mainly a 15% per line adjustment, rounding things to nice numbers. And we feel that if we continue to experience the level of autopsies and we're able to provide as much out-of-county autopsy services as we have in recent years, that the revenue will be $97,355. That's an overview of that revenue package.
Wait, just a second, Dr. Commissioner Dennis.
Hold on. When we get the questions up there.
Yep, I'm ready for questions.
Very good. Well, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Appreciate it. Well, Dr. Stedman, thank you very much for what you do. Our police department, sheriff's department, DA, courts couldn't operate without you. And I sincerely appreciate what you do. So I want you to make sure that you understand that before I ask my question.
Must be a bad one.
Oh. Out of, out of this, almost $4 million that we're spending out of the general fund, how much of that is required by state statute and how much is because we're just good people?
Well, the, mainly state statute, I would say, applies to our forensic autopsy services. The crime laboratory is supporting of our criminal justice system. I would have to look at the breakdown in our line items to see how much of our pathology services are. I can tell you that salary-wise, the pathology side is pretty big because doctors are very expensive. So salary-wise, pathology makes up a large portion of the services that are also required by statute.
But if we didn't do those services that are not required by state statute, who would do them?
Well, if you had to outsource your, you would have to outsource your toxicology laboratory services to a private lab because there's not one in the state of Kansas. So you, you would have to ship the items out. As for the other aspects of the crime laboratory, I don't know who would do any hemp differentiation because Sedgwick County is the only lab that does that currently. But there are DNA facilities at the state lab, and there are firearms, examiner services at the state lab.
Well, what I'm getting at is we're, we're doing this, and I think the KBI would be required to do a lot of these functions if we didn't, wouldn't they?
That would shift the burden to the KBI.
Right. That's what I'm getting at. Okay. Long, long way of getting there. I'm sorry. So as a result of that, and, and you've got about 10% of your income is from grants. And I, I would expect most of those come from the state.
We, the capacity enhancement grants, federal grant, that's probably the largest one, as is the Paul Coverdale grant. The only grant I would believe that comes from the state would be the Kansas Department of Health grant. And I just presented that a couple weeks ago at the commission meeting. But that one is a regular grant that comes annually.
So most of the money that you get from outside then is federal. It's not even state. But the state has ultimate responsibility for all, a lot of the functions that we're providing because we're really good people.
Well, that is true. But those grants are formula grants that come to the state and are divided among the crime labs who provide those services.
I guess my point is that we're doing a lot of things because we need to. Because if we didn't do them, our courts would be backlogged. We wouldn't have the scientific data for them to be able to prosecute people, our sheriff's department or police department. Everybody would be in trouble if we didn't do these. And yet, a lot of the responsibility for doing these things that you're doing is really, we could pass it off to the state and tell them to do it. And yet, we're not getting money back from the state in order to be able to continue this function. So I think that our next legislative agenda needs to have some significant input from the state to step up to their responsibility to support the Regional Forensic Science Center. So I'm not trying to cut anything. I'm, I'm supporting you. I just don't believe that the state is doing their share of what they need to do in order to be able to support this. So that, that's where I'm coming from. That's the gist of my questions on that. As far as your revenue package, I appreciate that. I think that's a good way to go. You mentioned at the beginning that you don't get that money. It goes into the general fund. Well, really, it does get back to you because the general fund is what supports the majority of your operations. So I don't really have a problem with that.
And I should point out that it is, it does come back to us in the form of funding a third doctor, which is absolutely important for providing those out-of-county services. We're at the brink of needing a fourth doctor. And so with the understanding that that money does support the salary for providing that service, yes.
Okay. Well, as we're looking at the agenda and, or the budget and all of the red lines he put on, on our budget sheets for the next five years or so, I think that we owe it to the Sedgwick County citizens to go back to the state and say, hey, you're requiring us to do a lot of this stuff because you're not doing it. And we need to have a legislative agenda saying you'd really need to step up to the plate. So I think next year, that should be one of the top things that we have on our legislative agenda. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. The software that you were talking about that you'd like to see or that you'd like to get, is that something that you already have that needs just upgraded? Or is that a, do you need a whole new stand-up standalone system?
Well, we're implementing our LIMs system, but that has, you know, when I get a grant to buy a Cadillac, I still have to put oil in it and make sure it runs on, as future. And that's the same here. We were able to afford the software with the grant. Now I'm trying to look for ways to keep that software going. So those are needs that we're somewhat addressing with the general fund and somewhat addressing with grants. So it's, it's, I think it's an ongoing need for all county departments. And so in our budget scenarios, we always lay that out as what we have now, what we're going to need in the future.
Okay. And I think that's one thing that, you know, I hear repeatedly from every department is we're short-staffed, you know, we have outdated technology. And I think a big part of being short-staffed is obviously the pay. And I'm really glad we're working on that. But I think we have to, we have to look at technology because we have so many areas that we could streamline operations that even though they would be an upfront cost, save so much money, time, long-term. It makes people's jobs easier, more secure. And I think that's something that we really have to start taking seriously because, I mean, every department so far has said that they could use this. And, I mean, paper charting, I can't believe we're still using paper charting, to be perfectly honest. So I would love to see us start looking into that a little bit more seriously. Thank you.
Commissioner House.
Thank you, Chairman. And Dr. Stedman, thank you for being here again today.
Thank you.
Coupled on to some of the questions that Commissioner Dennis was talking about, some of the work that we're doing at the RFSC, is some of this, some of, are some of those autopsies not required by law, but we're doing them because of local policy?
No. We only conduct, we only will carry out examinations on those that are required by statute.
Okay. Very good. That's, that's a good answer. On the DNA case backlog that you talked about, are we slowing down the justice system as, are they waiting for RFSC to complete work before they can go forward?
We've actively engaged with our case lists, and they're prioritizing those as they're needed for court. And we're just putting, moving those to the front of the queue. And right now, it's manageable.
Very good. That's, it's good to hear that. Thank you. I received some questions last week once again. It's a topic, this topic that seems to, we talk about almost every year. But what's our status on the sexual assault kits?
Well, we actually tried to figure out how many sexual assault kits went to the KBI last year versus how many came to the Regional Forensic Science Center. And the vast majority of them, by ratio, came to the Regional Forensic Science Center if they were cases that needed any form of examination. Now that said, the police Now that said, the police department has submitted a great deal of sexual assault kits that were previously untested, but the KBI discontinued their transport for a period of time. They were still receiving evidence, but they weren't coming and getting it for the PD, and so I think that may have contributed to why we received the vast majority of those rape kits.
Do these kits required environmental storage, like cold storage or anything like that?
They are stored at room temperature.
Room temperature, okay. And to the extent there's a backlog there, is there an intent not to process some of those, and why would we not process if that's the case?
We, so the KBI led an initiative for all kits to be tested. That has not become the law yet. As such, if the case is not going to be adjudicated, it has a lack of prosecutorial advancement, we can send that kit back to the police department and tell them that they can have it examined by the KBI if they so please. But we are, at this point, doing what we can to meet the needs of our local district court.
Can you quantify approximately how many of the kits are in that status?
Of the 200, I think we were able to identify a handful, maybe a dozen.
And what's the cost per kit to have processed?
I don't, I.
Can you just spitball a number for me?
I, it varies so greatly from kit to kit, I'd have to get back with you on that.
Okay. I just think it's one of those things that the public is certainly interested in, and then, let me see. I think, with respect to the unclaimed bodies, there's been some information in the news recently that the ARPA money, or maybe COVID money, I'm not sure exactly what money is available at this point, but there's been some grant funds available to take care of funeral costs of people who died during this COVID pandemic. Can some of that money be used to take care of this?
So that's actually FEMA money that would be used to reimburse funeral costs, so I don't know that that would be available necessarily for this unless it was part of the overall package, but we can certainly look into it.
I think we should, and then out of these 23 currently, you did 23 cremations so far, but you said you had around 20, 20 to 25 unclaimed right now in the, in the facility waiting to be claimed, how long will they stay there until we do, until we take the next step?
It really depends how much success that the medical investigator has with locating. If we've exhausted all possibilities, then that takes time, it can take a month, it can take six months. Sometimes families say that they're trying to get the money and they'll call us back, and then when we follow up, their phone's no longer connected. And so then you have some idea that they may be trying to find the money, but you can't reach out to them. And so we have tried to implement, when we do have those conversations, give them a period of time to help, not trying to say we want to expedite the process, but we need to manage that population as efficiently as possible. So it can range from a month, from weeks to months.
All right, well, thank you for the information.
Okay, thank you, Dr., and I'll see other questions, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the Department of Corrections, page 489, and Director Glenda Martin will present.
County Manager Leadership Team, happy Budget Hearing Day. So, let me see, which is, oh, okay. So the Department of Corrections is a pretty big organization. I have it split up into three sections. The view you're looking at right now is the 10,000-foot view of the department. Our mission is to provide a continuum of evidence-based correctional services in our community, which promotes public safety and accountability while supporting positive behavior change in an effort to reduce recidivism. How do I get this to? Oh, okay, just didn't switch the first time. So I have 14 programs actually embedded into the Department of Corrections, and five of those are adult programs, drug court, pre-trial services, adult ISP intensive supervision programs, work release, and adult residential. In the juvenile side, I have eight programs. The juvenile detention facility, juvenile residential facility, JAC, juvenile field services, which is intense supervision of juveniles, case management for juveniles, conditional release for juveniles, the ERC and JRBG program, and then home-based services. And then on the third slide I have, which you, one of them you saw was our administrative, we also have an administrative services that provides support services, managing all the grants that we work on, office situation, hiring, doing PFAs. And so I have a total right now of 303 FTEs in the Department of Corrections. Our funding, I think it actually skipped some slides. Our funding is broken down right now, 58% is tax-funded, and grant-funded is at 42%. 42% is about $9.1 million, that's a little more than that. And our services that we provide for our clients includes correctional intervention, supervision, the juvenile detention facility, and any community-based services that we also provide. We see on a monthly basis about 2,600 clients a month, which comes to about 10,000 a year. The services are all delivered internally. We do have collaborative partners, but my staff do most of the services. And we strive to keep our recidivism rates at a statewide level, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about our recidivism rates, so that you can understand what we're trying to accomplish, what is our outcome for our programs. So talking about our personnel, right now I have a 191 FTEs in the general fund and 137 in our grant fund. You can see it's broken down by, between juvenile and adult programs. So we have a total of 329.25 FTEs, but 25.5 are currently unfunded FTEs. Remember, we maintain a detention facility, but if our facility is not running at that 81 capacity, we don't fill those positions. And what I will also tell you is, right now, we have a very high vacancy rate in our department, and I'll get to that as well. So Department of Corrections performance measure, we re-measure recidivism. We do a lot of outcomes, we have a lot of data that we collect. But recidivism for us is, what happens when somebody comes to our program and actually completes the program? Do they go out and commit a new crime? And we track that in all our juvenile and adult programs. And our overall recidivism is at the all-time lowest, at 7%. It's continued to go down. I do have a handout for you that Chris Morales will pass out, that really specifically addresses each of the programs, so you can actually see where they're all at. I know that yesterday, when Mark, or Judge Garing gave his presentation, and I think there was a question about drug court, what, how, what that success rate is, and it's very good, it's 4%. That means only 4% that successfully complete that program ever go back into the system. So that's a 96% rate of positivity. So the handout, you'll see, I calculate it by all my programs, and then I break it down between juvenile and adult, yes?
Okay, so I wrote down that they have a 50%, it was 48 revocated and two transferred out of the program. So you're telling me it was a 90-plus?
Okay, understand, this might be the difference of what you're talking about, is recidivism. So it's after they complete the program, one year later.
I guess we could sidebar after this, because I'm not understanding the difference between the two.
And we also need to understand what the definition of recidivism really means, because for us, recidivism is if that client goes back and re-convicts, is re-convicted of a new crime, or is re-confined, not just arrested. There has to be a re-conviction or a re-confinement, they go back to jail or to prison.
Okay, well, let's sidebar that for later.
Okay, super. So you have the handout that talks about the performance measures, the actual recidivism and the breakdown for each program. We have some challenges in our department. One of our biggest challenges right now is hiring, recruiting, and retaining our employees. I have another slide that's going to sort of show you why we're having some of those problems. We have a, I indicated earlier, 54 of my vacancies, that's 18% just in my corrections department. 41 of those are corrections officers, and those are the people that do the direct care in all of my facilities. I have eight ISO positions that are vacant and five other positions. Every day, we're hiring and losing people, so this was the numbers from last week. I had some pending resignations, so that was going to be another four. And I know somebody's going to ask me this question about where are these people going? They are going to higher pays. I had nine leave to go for a higher-paying position. Six of them went to LEO, that's other law enforcement agencies that are paying higher rates. I had two that went to private, which I'm sure was a higher rate. I know I had a few last year that went to the post office, and they had to pay more than what I am able to pay. I had two that left because of COVID reasons. You know, we, our business did not stop, so we do have clients that come in with COVID. And I had two that left for health reasons. Working in a correctional agency this last year has been very trying for my employees. Here's our salary comparison, so you can say to yourself, why do people leave? My corrections officers are getting $14.66 an hour, okay? These are other detention facilities and correctional facilities across the state, and what it tells you is ours is the lowest paid in the state. These are two of my biggest positions within the department that we have to fill. Corrections officers is obviously the biggest. Intensive supervision officers are the ones on the right. Again, we are the lowest in the state at $16.98 an hour. I've lined out many of the other districts and what they're getting paid. And I know that HR is working on this, on their comparison study, and I very much appreciate the work that they're presenting, and met with them last week on. But this gives you an idea. Corrections officers, it's kind of down there at the bottom, on the right-hand corner. A corrections service officer is a probation officer for the district court. So they supervise low to moderate clients, and my, my staff supervise the moderate to high, and more intensive supervision, and yet they're getting paid more than my folks are. They get paid $20.66 an hour. So for the Department of Corrections, our budget request, it is a little bit less than last year, down by 2.8%. It's $19,515,700. Our contractuals went up just a slight for a few reasons. Our medical extension with WellPath, we had to get a generator transfer switch for our juvenile residential facility, UA costs and food costs, so it goes up a little bit. Commodities, it's down a little bit. Our inter-transfer funds, that's the standard $825,000 that we usually get. The reason it was higher in '20, '21 was a CIP project that we worked on, it was a one-time cost for the adult residential lobby that got expanded. So we're actually getting 3.91% less than last year, it's $24,657,280 for the total funds for the Department of Corrections. And I have one decision package this year. It's for an administrative assistant. This person actually works under me, I had a, she was a part-time position. You've heard them talk about all of the technology things we have going on. We are right in the middle of our e-corrections, which is our records management, that's being built by Journal Technologies, and this person helps make that happen. She's the go-between for the program and the Journal Technologies people that are building our program. We also have in, that's going on, is the, and I know Judge Garing and Mark Bennett and Jeff Easter talked a little bit about the technology that's coming from the state that was full court, is now odyssey. That's also new, that will hit us as well. We also, the KDOC, put on a new records management system that began on April 1st. So we're working through another new system right now. And then E-Justice, which is another records management system that we found out about, which is now called NIEC, NIEC RMS, is a new one. So I have four new programs that my staff are being trained on to keep track of and manage, and this person actually helps and will help with all of those, making sure we have instructional manuals, training, and all the things that go with that. So this was a part-time position that we currently now have as a temporary full-time position, and I want to make it a full-time position, period. And I would be giving up my part-time that she did have. Does that make sense? Okay. The cost for that is $57,407, it's one FTE. The budgeted cost for that part-time position is $2,944. Then we have the crime prevention funds. Those are the programs from last year, and I believe Dr. Craig recently came and presented on those programs, Ember Hope, Learning the Ropes, Higher Ground, Pando Initiative, McAdams Academy, known as C-Bar, and PAS for Kids. Those programs have struggled over COVID, and And just getting success and getting their referrals. I have asked for a new RFP this year. So after this year ends, we'll do a new RFP with, that will go out actually tomorrow, I believe, for those programs. The money, the funding is the same as last year, 582,383. And that's all I have.
Glenda, thank you for this presentation. I'm sorry I had to step out. So forgive me if you have already addressed this when I was out. Because I know that, you know, you have mentioned in state and in the past that, you know, the DOC provides programs that are state-mandated.
That's correct.
So what percentage of your programs are state-mandated?
So.
And if you don't know that, that's okay, but.
So state-mandated programs, the state actually funds those.
Well, right.
And so what you're really asking me is which ones don't they fund? Don't they fund that we don't have to have? Well, we don't have to have a juvenile detention facility. There's no state requirement. But we have enough kids. If we didn't have those, that program, we would have to send those kids out of county to a different detention facility.
Have they increased the level in which they fund them, though? I mean, they might fund them, but do they fund them? Has it increased at all?
Not, well, the juvenile detention facility is funded by general fund. Have any of my adult or juvenile grant funds increased? And the answer is no. It's been flat funding. The adult side, flat funding for 20 years plus. The juvenile side is a little bit different. They haven't given us more funding, but they have given us different funding in a different way. They added the evidence-based funding, which was that, it's $767,000 that they gave to communities to apply for. So that was extra. But for funding the programs like JAC and AISP, they do provide all the funding for those.
So the questions that I asked yesterday, I'm not sure if you were tuning in or not. But so have you heard of the term restorative justice?
Yes.
And so what are your feelings around that philosophy? And are you implementing it in some way, shape, or form in what you do at the Department of Corrections?
Yes. So I, so restorative justice is really about the offender, the victim, and the community. And restoring justice so that the, whatever the offense was that happened makes it whole for all parties involved. And that is a very hard and difficult process because victims don't often want to have, to talk to the person that offended, that the offense was against. But I do believe in our drug court program. When you have a client that has been using drugs, the family does suffer in that process. And through drug court and what they produce, they bring families together. They sort of make sure that they try to start building those bridges that were lost because that person could have stolen from the family. Or, you know, there's just a lot of stuff that goes through offenders in a drug court program. So in a sense, they do use that model. In our juvenile programs, that model is used all the time. Again, if victims don't want to participate, that's hard to bring them to the table. But that doesn't mean it doesn't happen, because it does. And it has happened in our adult world as well.
Okay. I'm not sure who was first, so we'll go, we'll go this way. Is that okay, commissioners? Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. First, I, you know, when I toured your area, I think every, all the intervention stuff you guys are doing with the juvenile department is just incredible. And to see that only 7% are coming back, I mean, that's such a great number. So thank you so much for that. But my question is, if we have part of our fun, or part of our employees are state-funded or grant-funded and part of them are from the general fund, how do we make sure that everybody's getting those pay raises? Are we taking some of those full-time from grant to general fund? Or are we supplementing the grants? Or what does that look like?
That's an excellent question. So hopefully, what we'll be able to do is work with Glenda's team to try and work with the state to make sure that there's adequate funding for those programs, for those positions that are on that side of the table. If not, then yeah, we'll have to work with some kind of subsidy to either move positions over or to fund a portion of those positions a different way than we have in the past.
We'll run with similar problems with Calcare and other grant-funded positions. So it's a good question.
Thank you. And then with the drug court, is that being utilized as much as it can? Or do we have space to use that more than we are? Or can you just explain that a little bit more to me?
Drug court right now is, their population's around 100 right now. I think their capacity is about 125. You know, COVID sort of played havoc on all my programs a little bit this year. But they usually run very true to those numbers. Could they expand? Not at this time, not without adding staff to that program. So, you know, it's a very good program. And I just, I will tell you, drug court saw for last year, they worked with 159 clients. And the cost is 2435 per day for that client. And if you'd like me to give you all the breakdowns of every program and the cost, I have that too.
I just think that's interesting because if, average, it was like $30 a day to keep somebody in jail. And if only, if 96%.
Seventy, it was 71.
Yes.
$71 a day. And then if we are looking at, you know, anywhere between a 50 or a 96% rate of not going back in the system within a year, it seems like that would be a really good thing to start investing more in, where we would save more money long-term. So I would be very interested to see how we could expand that, knowing that it would have such a savings on the back end.
So one of the things that is coming through the legislature right now that got passed in the House and the Senate, and there, and I think Mark touched on it yesterday, honestly, I couldn't remember if I heard him say it, is the drug diversion program. And in that legislature, community corrections or court services can do the diversion program, this specific program. Court Services has turned that down. And I have set aside one officer that, that we have not, we don't have yet until January, that I would like to put on the drug diversion program and run a drug diversion program, which would ultimately help keep people from going into the system deeper. And so that would be something that we're looking forward to in the future.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Glenda, do you consider probation rehabilitation?
Absolutely. It is corrections, corrections is, that's what it is, is our job is to help correct the behavior so that they don't go back further into the system. It is not to punish, it is to correct. And so that's what we work towards.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I appreciate it. Glenda, thanks for being here.
Sure.
I just have one question on the crime prevention fund. As I recall from the briefing you gave not too long ago, we have a number of those projects that were not successful.
That's correct.
And that's why, that you went out for an RFP?
Yes, correct.
My one question is, you've got 582,383 in this. Do you think that will cover whatever comes back from your IFP?
Yes, I do.
Very good. That's my one question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions. Number one, as I say, thank you for all you do. I know you have one of the most difficult jobs. And I just wanted, number one, just say I appreciate the great job you do for Sedgwick County. I know it's extremely tough.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I know it's hard. Anyway, you mentioned 303 current FTEs. But are you, when you say 303, it's also minus 54 because that's what you're short today.
Yes, that's correct.
So maybe the number's around 250.
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
Okay. When you said, and I added up as you were speaking, 23 people out of 54, 23 people that you said have left, over what period of time?
I believe that was about over, what, Chris, six months? I think she's just, yeah, we were just pulling it up as the commission started. I meant to go back and really look, dive deeper. You know, people turn in their resignations. They don't always get a lot of information on where they're going. But I do get to see some of the PAFs and the resignation letters that go through, as well as Rusty gets to see those. And so sometimes people put in there that they're taking a different job or a higher-paying job in their resignation.
And so, again, I would call this probably some type of an exit interview that you conduct.
Yes, we do.
Does your staff do that?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So out of the 23, nine of those said, nine of those said more pay.
Yes.
So pay was the number one reason why they decided they're intent to leave.
Yes. I mean, they got offered a higher-paying job. And who's not going to take that?
Right. In fact, I would say, you know, for example, someone wants to move up to be an LEO. In my opinion, that's career advancement.
And we do have, none of these were those. I have promotions that go on all the time, I would almost say. Most of our hires in ISO positions are people, corrections officers, that have all the qualifications and then get promoted into the higher job.
And I'd even say going to USPS, for example, again, is a totally different type of work. Maybe they just say, I would rather be, do something that's a little more, you know, what I want to do. I don't want to do the corrections thing. For whatever reason, maybe it's not pay. It's just a different type of work. And so, again, out of these 23, the nine obviously stand out to me. I would love to get as much of that type of data as you possibly can. And I think, you know, if we're trying to find maybe you, using someone who's maybe outside your own organizational umbrella to get that data, it might help them speak. Because maybe there's reasons that they're leaving, but they don't feel comfortable sharing those ideas. So again, I think we, county-wide, I think we need to change our strategy on how we do that. But I appreciate the fact that you do have some data. And it's interesting to me, on your list here, we're competing with Sedgwick County Detention, which we just gave a $3 raise. They're on this list.
Well, they're, they are actually getting paid four and a half more than my officers are getting paid. So, yeah, why wouldn't they leave me to go work for the sheriff? That's a pretty big pay jump.
And just to ask about apples and apples comparison, are all these numbers on this sheet, are these starting wages?
Yes. Those are starting wages.
Starting wages.
Strictly starting wages.
All right. I want to shift my focus over to the Senate Bill 367. One of the, a couple of things we've talked about over the years is I don't know that recidivism should be measured over one year. Part of the reason why is because even the adjudication, the adjudication process takes time. And we use a one-year threshold to measure this with. Again, number one, I'm proud of you for going from 20 to 7. That's an incredible change. And I have a theory as to why that may have happened, but.
But remember, they're not checked until after, one year after they've successfully left our program. So it's a year later.
And I think with all due respect to this discussion, because we're running a little behind, why don't we have this conversation? Because that's the conversation that I wanted to have earlier. So if you don't mind, can we table this?
I need this to be an open public meeting, so tell me when. I want this to be a discussion in public, open meeting, not necessarily my office.
Then have your meeting, then have your discussion. But I've been told to keep this at a certain timeframe. So that's what I'm asking.
I don't think this will take very long. But that's okay. We can, we can take it up another time, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you, Glenda. We will schedule a time to meet to discuss this. And then we could, we can publish the minutes so that it would be for transparency's sake. Would that be agreeable to you?
We don't do minutes for these meetings. This is just on YouTube.
We could, though.
We could. And again, I think the public has an interest in my, in my questions. And I think that the people need to hear the answers. And so, again, we can do this whenever, but I do think it needs to be, it needs to be public, open meeting. I can do this during a BOCC meeting in front of them. I'll just raise the issue. That'd be fine with me. But I'll let you know when.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
She's done.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have anything.
All right. Thank you, Glenda.
Okay. We're a little off schedule. This will be the last presentation Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Director Chris Laborman will present. And Chris, you have virtually no time.
All right. Good morning, Chairman Commissioners, Chris Laborman, MABCDs. Stayed at, so thank you, Ms. Cole, for heading out some org charts there. My slides are slightly different than what is in the book. We actually noticed that we had forgotten to remove a few blocks on the org chart when we sent it in that is in front of you. I also included breakdowns of the division, which we can talk to and answer questions if appropriate. So MABCD, of course, is designed to ensure that residential and commercial structures are properly and safely planned, built, maintained throughout the county. We do that through national best practices that are adopted and adapted through amendments as required for our local level. And of course, we try to ensure that our rules are equitable, that we provide excellent customer service, and that we do the, take measures to support our local industry. We include regulation and licensing of all the industry professionals. We enforce land use within the county. That includes FEMA floodplain regulations. And we do oversee the City of Wichita Neighborhood Housing Inspection Department, or Division, I should say. While COVID, of course, changed, changed our dynamic a little bit. We still, we had an increased caseload in neighborhood, though we had fewer building inspections. We still completed more than 101,000 inspections last year, issued more than 34,000 permits, and completed a 608 commercial plan reviews. The number of permits is about 6,000 down from our normal yearly average. We're also usually closer to 700 with permit reviews. So not grossly low, but a little bit. Revenue, as I believe all of you saw, ended the year about a quarter of a million dollars below what we had originally forecast. So we actually came out in pretty good shape. And as of right now, for this year, we're about 300,000, 300 to 350,000 above last year's pay. So it looks like we are back on track as long as the industry sustains that. So 85 total employees, as we'll see here shortly. But we do touch a lot of programs. And as mentioned in the numbers, do, do cover a lot of things. So again, if there are any questions on the specifics, I'd be glad to field those. Total budget responsibility, I want to make sure and to note that this is slightly different than what you'll see in all of our county budget books because I wanted to make sure we include the city piece that we do oversee and manage. So we have one position. Our nuisance inspector is funded through environmental resources, through the solid waste tax funding. Then the, our county budget that we work with and see here is the 8,35,000. And then we have the, almost the 1.15-ish million that is the city general fund. That is the portion that the city pays towards neighborhood enforcement. And that goes completely through the city process and is handled there. But again, I wanted to make sure that that was transparent for our discussion here today. So that, that means that about two-thirds of that division is funded through builder revenue and is seen within our county budget. The other third through the city's general fund. So our position breakdown, again, shows, to go around the pie chart there, it shows the environmental resources position. We do, the gray is the 16% or 14 positions that are county-managed positions, but are still City of Wichita employees from the merger. So city pays all those salaries and benefits. We reimburse that on a quarterly basis. As discussed, the city general fund, that pays 13% of our employees, 10 positions there. Then county, county employees and county positions, and that is growing, which is a good thing. We hope, we need to grow that to where the only piece that is not, well, there'd be a few pieces not counted there, but we need to take over the gray section and a part of that other yellow there as well. So we, yeah, so 47% there. County subsidized neighborhood inspection, as was mentioned, is the other 16%. And then we do fund one position in Wichita Fire. And we fund the zoning, the four zoning positions in MAPD. The, and that is for fire alarm and sprinkler review in the fire department. We do collect the revenue for those. So we do get revenue that pays for that position. The MAPD positions that. The MAPD positions that we subsidize, for lack of a better term, their revenue on a normal year will pay about 40%, high year 50, low a little less, but usually about 40% of their positions are covered with revenue that we bring in. The rest, again, subsidized with other revenue sources. So, a few things to point out on our strategic outlook and our challenges and opportunities, as you've heard from everyone else, trying to be a little more competitive in the market. Our unique situation there is that we require a relatively high level of certification and experience to be employed with us. And then employees gain a lot of qualifications and certifications while with us, which makes them, again, very attractive back to the, to the industry. So, especially in the trades areas where those are short, we also, it's interesting, of course, when we're busy is when the industry is busy and when they're hiring as well. We were able to, in this year's budget, and we're working to get that fully implemented throughout 20, we started in last year and throughout this year, to allow our inspectors to promote through the various tiers or levels of an inspector within their position, not having to change positions. I think that's going to be very helpful. It's working well so far. We would like to apply that to our administrative section, to our permit writers, code specialists, those who work there. We think we could find a lot of gains there that would well fit any compensation packages that, and studies that HR is working. Of course, where we are so web-based and online-based, our hardware, software, and again, with inspectors in the field is always something we have to keep a close eye on. Doing a lot of server upgrades this year. We'll be looking at a tech refresh the year after next. And then we're also upgrading our electronic plan review this year. So, that'll put that about, that'll put that two or three years out before any major changes. But where we've had those programs, five years with some, 10 years with others, we will be looking at major upgrades in years to come, within the next five years. A lot of our focus, so decision packages that you saw over the last few years, some of those have been focused to try to increase our ability to oversee customer protection, consumer protection, specifically permits that go into avoid status, permits that go overdue, to have enough staff to be able to keep an eye on that, investigate that a little bit better. So, continuing to work there. We also spend a lot of staff time on records requests. And a lot of the push that we're starting right now and going into next year's budget is to try to get, again, a lot of that web-based so that customers, consumers can look up as much as is possible and legal to do so, just on our website. We think that will be fairly helpful there. Obviously, a challenge is always to keep up with the code review cycle and make sure that we're ensuring safety while supporting industry. And also, as you all have seen, the legislative changes at the state have caused us concern at times. So, we, again, are doing what we can to keep up there, and we'll have to keep a close eye on that, encouraging the State Fire Marshal to re-energize the committee that was formed a few years ago to work some of those. Obviously, as all of this stuff changes and adjusts, we have to adjust our processes and at times our positions to adapt. The more we go online, the more, for example, the more we have to shift resources to support that versus customers coming through the door. And then another thing that we're keeping a close eye on is the increased, the increased need as well as the increased desire for enforcement in the City of Wichita. And since the budgets do not exactly run parallel, that is one thing that we need to keep an eye on because we do all that by percentages. So, if I have city employees who remain in positions and get raises, I have county employees who leave and I have entry-level positions there, my budget percentages now start, even though I'm funding the exact same positions, and in many cases, the same faces, the percentages of that budget start to now not align. So, a few, last few points on that is, we want to continue to pursue technology replacement funding, whether through a separate fund or how we manage that in the budget to, just to keep that as simple and easy as possible. Our industry stakeholders, especially WABA, are very much in favor of that idea. Obviously, with the price of materials and forecasts in the industry, we keep a close eye on where we think that will go in an effort to manage our revenue. As it has stayed steady for us, we are still providing a discount on building permits based on still some excess in our revenue reserve. So, we plan to continue that at least for the next few months and reevaluate at that point. So, budget breakdown adjusts slightly higher with a small inflation rate there than last year. You do see a lot of percentage change there. That is a result of what we initiated from 19 going into 20, which realigned our cost centers. The merge is complete for all practical purposes. Some of those cost centers were aligned to manage that and pull positions in. So, now we've, we've just flowed those back out to make budgeting and bill-paying easier. And that is a reflection of that process. With that, I will gladly stand for any questions.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One real quick question, just so I understand Lindsey's budget book, okay? You're needing 8,35,205, but you actually are going to project revenues of 8,259,772 according to the budget book. So, in actuality, why are you going to add to the general fund rather than subtract? Is that not true?
Based on that forecast, that would be true. Yes, sir. We'll, and that's why the discount will stay in place and see what we can do with that throughout this year. Do you have more to add?
I think the only thing I would add is, there's no increases yet for compensation or health insurance yet. And so, that could, that could impact that amount. And then because it is MABCD and because there was litigation with the City of Wichita, we actually restrict those funds that cannot be used for other general fund support. It may only be reinvested back into these programs or technology.
So, they go back into MABCD?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They don't not go
This is the only department that does that.
They do not go into the general fund?
It's in the general fund, but it's segregated. We have to watch it very closely.
Okay. And this number, as you said, will adjust based on what kind of pay raises we give and so forth.
Superb. Thank you for that reminder, Lindsey.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. And a couple of years ago, we gave you flexibility to adjust rates, fee schedules, and apparently it's working very well. Any comments on that part?
Yeah, so we, since that time, we have maintained a 10% discount on building permits and plan review, where that is the bulk of our revenue, the bulk of where the funding comes, and we've maintained those. So, yes, it has worked very well. It is kind of interesting because it does, it tends to also stimulate development, even though that's not a huge part of a lot of projects. We do see, it's probably been long enough now that we don't see a rush to get your permit before the discount is gone. But, but we do see that as an incentive for people to build now versus delay the decision.
There seems to be a construction boom going on right now, and maybe remodeling as well. Is that, is that giving you challenges right now because of what's happening in the economy with respecting new permits being issued? You're obviously keeping up with it, but I'm just wondering how that challenge is being handled?
So, I'm not sure I completely understand
Well, I mean, what I've seen in the community is, construction is just, it's out, it's just exploded, so to speak. And that obviously has a huge impact on your staff.
It does now. It has, it slowed somewhat in commercial and exploded more on the residential side in our area. So, we, the bottom line is, we've been able to adjust. So, I would say that while different, we're probably still fairly average as far as overall numbers.
I have two more questions. These will be quick. On page 4, 747 of the book, I noticed that the salary that's shown on that page, 2.2 million dollars, is all Fund 110. That's property tax dollars.
So, this goes back to the discussion that we had with Commissioner Dennis. It does live in the general fund, which is Fund 110.
Okay.
But if you're able to go back a couple pages, you'll see the revenue information.
I do see that.
And you'll see that there's really no property tax subsidy that goes into this.
So, it's, it's, so unfortunately for me, 110 is just general fund. I always, I always associate that with property tax dollars, but in this case, it's fees. Okay. And I do agree, the comments from Commissioner Dennis were exactly one of my other questions. And if my follow-up question is, on the expenditure and transition fund, we're still funding almost another $400,000 yet this year for continuing transition. I would think that's got to be done. What's going on that still has to be transitioned at this point?
And I'd let someone else talk to the title of that fund, but that would mainly, if I'm thinking of the right roll-up there, we still have that, the Wichita Fire Department position that I spoke to and the zoning positions that we pay for. So, I believe that is salary transfer for those positions back to the City of Wichita. So, that, the, on the, if I go back to the pie chart, so looking at the gray area there, so the, where we have city employees, I also still have some city vehicles in there. So, there are, there are things we still have that are, yeah, city employees, city equipment, that we have not fully transitioned out of the county-managed side of the department.
Are we meaning for the vehicles basically to be replaced at that point?
Yes.
The county will replace those, and so that'll go away eventually. In terms of the city employees, is there any plan to transition them and actually get through this process?
With retirements.
Oh, retirements.
So, so no, no, and a new employee cannot enter those positions as a city employee. They would have to switch to county. So, employees who are, they were MABCD employees at the time of the merger are still allowed to take any position within the department and maintain their retirement system, pay in retirement.
So, we might see this category for quite a long time.
But that, it will be for, yes, sir. It will be for some time. So, we, we had two positions transfer, or we have two positions transferring this year, two retirements who are city inspectors, those will be hired as county. But yes, the bottom line is, those, the 14 remaining positions, some of those will not forecast to retire for about nine or 10 years, 10, 11 years, actually.
Let me just finalize my comment and just say, well, say thank you for all you do. You have a very tough job as well, and you're very responsive. When I, when I send constituent issues your way, you are all over it. And I want to say thank you for a great job and a very tough job. I appreciate, appreciate your great leadership in your department.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I don't see any other comments. Chris, I echo, you do a nice job serving the community and your group, so please extend our appreciation to your staff.
Will do. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Okay. So, where are we now?
I think that's all.
That's it. We'll be back at 1:00.
Back at 1:00? Okay. So, I see you, you've summarized everything on the last two pages of budget request, revised, requested, change, and you've done the package summary and the revenue summary.
Yes, sir. I kind of cheated and put those at the front end when I started to let you know that it was an $89 million budget collectively for those seven departments, about a 1.69% reduction from last year for those seven departments collectively, and that there was about nine decision, or 10 decision packages worth 863,000, and then the two revenue packages for 894,000, all for your consideration and obviously at the will of the commission based on your vision and your, your needs for the 22 budget. So, with that, public safety is finished and
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back at 1:00?
Yeah.
Okay.